All right, welcome to the Select Board. Select Board meeting for Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. Before we get started, would you stand with me and let's salute the flag?
I want to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, in every justice and justice.
How's the audio? Is the audio coming on okay? Okay. We've been getting yelled at lately, so I just want to do a mic check, that's all. All right, very good. All right, 7 o'clock, our first order of business is the 99 Restaurant of Boston, LLC, change of officer application. I don't believe this is a public hearing. I think this is a simple matter of reviewing. Do we have anyone present?
We do, yes.
Oh, please, okay.
Thank you.
So just name for the record and just state your, what your application, what you're seeking from the board, please.
Yes, my name is Joe Devlin. I'm a partner at the firm of Upton, Canal and Devlin with offices at 112 Water Street in Boston, Massachusetts. Represent, in this case, the 99 Restaurants of Boston, LLC, which has a location here at 401 Main Street. There's 65 99 locations in Massachusetts. Hold on to your seats right now, this is very exciting. They're having an officer change down in the headquarters in Nashville where Goodlow Partee is retiring and Wendy Harkness is taking his place. Due to the size of the transactions, we were able to go to the ABCC first. They looked at all the documentation. They sent you a letter that said this is in compliance with Chapter 138, but we still have to go to the communities. We do actually have a public hearing for, for, or at least an advertised hearing for this, so that's why we're here.
Okay, let me pause for the record. Is this, Mr. Montori, is this a public hearing?
I do not believe so. If there's no advertisement in your handout, then it does not.
It happens because it's unclear when it comes from the ABCC, so.
We've never treated it like that.
Okay, very good, okay.
They will ask us for the advertisement. Yeah, they'll, yes, definitely.
Okay, I'll open up the board, but just to clarify, this is a grand total of this individual being responsible for the change of officer for 64, 64 down the rest, 64 across the Commonwealth, Massachusetts?
Yeah, I think there's several hundred across nine states, so yeah, they're responsible for all of them.
All right, very good.
Nothing's changing at the operations here. Perhaps if the ad didn't go in, you could put it on for your next one and do the ad and, you know, then I don't have to come.
All right, for me, it's straightforward. However, I will pause and open up the board. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Wellman?
No, your application was thorough.
Thank you.
Quite complete, and I didn't know we had that many locations in Massachusetts.
That's a lot.
Yep, and I noticed they were under two LLCs, two different names.
Yeah, and then immediately above them is, is the same common ownership all the way up.
Yep, no, I have no questions. It seems to be in order, thank you.
All right, how about Mr. Mackey?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Tronick?
I have nothing.
Okay, same here. This is pretty straightforward, so, and very thorough. So what's that, what, that being said, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion for approval.
Have a motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Johnson. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass as unanimous. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll figure it out tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, very good, thank you.
Good luck on those other 67 visits.
Well, we've got 45 final approvals already, so we're almost done.
Awesome, thanks again, good luck, bye-bye.
Have a good evening.
All right, 7:05, next order of business is National Grid Poll Petition for Marshall Street. This is a public hearing, so typically what we do is we're going to open up the public hearing, we'll bring it to the board, we'll see if there's any butters that are going to come up, please. We'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back to the board. You're good, my friend, you're good, you can take the, you can take the floor. Before that, do I have a motion to waive the reading of the public notice?
Second.
I have a motion, second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, please, name for the record and state your, what you were looking for.
Good evening, Dave Boucher, Senior Designer, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street in North Andover. I'm here before you tonight on a petition to move, relocate an existing pole, number, pole number 43 on Marshall Street, right near the intersection of Catharwood Street. Currently, the, the old pole that's there, that's existing, is right in the middle of a driveway. I think there's two spaces, they made it into three by, by paving around the other side of the pole. What we're, we'd like to do is to move that pole approximately plus or minus 25 feet in a northerly direction and then remove the old pole that's in the middle of the driveway. And if the town sees fit, it would enable us to go forward to place that new pole there and take away the old pole.
Okay, very good. So let's, again, let's open up to the board, we'll, we'll bring it back to, any direct butters will close the public hearing, we'll bring it back to the board. So, Ms. Tronick?
I have no questions.
How about Mr. Mackey?
No questions.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing to.
Ms. Wellman?
No, so we're such wary, Ms. Wellman.
You're all going quick because of the Red Sox game. I know this board, all right.
Thank you, your application is complete, thank you.
But, but I will say, looking at the map, looks very straightforward. However, you know, it definitely could potentially impact 384 Marshall Street, so it's going to be interesting to see if we have any butters, that's all, or any residents. So, I'm going to pause for the board, so at this time, I'm going to call, are there any residents that would like to speak on this petition? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second by Ms. Tronick. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the applicant's petition. I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Just a quick discussion, it goes without saying that that pole will be removed, correct?
Yes. Once all the utilities of the companies are transferred to the new pole, the old pole will be removed by telephone company.
Very good, just calling out for the residents potentially. All right, with that being said, so I have a motion and a second, all's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for removing the pole.
Go Red Sox.
Yeah. Usually you don't do that.
All right, perfect, moving right along. Next order of business is Tuxbury Deli King Liquor License Transfer, 885 Main Restaurant. Now it's going to be called DBA, Mikes on Main, Mikes on Main, Common Victroler License and Entertainment License Applications. So bear with me here, so this is, this is also a public, public meeting, so do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Signify, aye, unanimous. Same deal here, what we're going to do is we'll listen to the applicants, bring it to the board, bring it to the residents, we'll close it down and bring it back to the board. So, please, name for the record, please.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Adam LaGrassa, I'm an attorney at Nikozian Associates over in Tinsley Borough. I have the privilege of representing Michael Liu and Yanping Zhang, who are in the process of purchasing the Deli King Restaurant, just down the road here at 885 Main Street. The restaurant is currently owned and operated by Dimitrios Camatos and Arthur Aganis, who are the principals of Tuxbury Deli, Inc. Upon completion of the sale, my clients intend to operate the business under a new name, Mikes on Main. It's planned to be traditional American-style cuisine, serviced from breakfast through dinner. Excuse me. Applications before you are for transfer of the Section 12 On Premises All Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant License that's currently held by Tuxbury Deli, Inc., as well as applications for Common Victroler and Entertainment Licenses. Clients have formed two new corporate entities in connection with the purchase, so just to provide a little bit of context for the planned transaction. Entity 885 Main Real Estate Holdings, Inc. will be the purchaser of the real estate. 885 Main Restaurant, Inc. will be the purchaser of the business assets and will operate the new restaurant. They'll be the holder of the liquor license upon transfer. We've provided all of the documentation regarding that transaction, financial supports for that transaction. Just a couple of points on the liquor license transfer application. So this request includes a request for alteration of the premises. Client is planning to perform some minor renovation, updating work at the property. Should have minimal impact to the overall layout of the premises. We've provided an updated floor plan, financial supports for the proposed renovation costs. Second point on the transfer application is there's a request to extend the hours. So, under Chapter 138, Section 12, holder of a restaurant license is entitled to operate for service of alcohol from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., but the statute allows the town discretion to extend those hours up to 8:00 a.m. and as late as 2:00 a.m. So we've made a request to extend the hours on the morning side, on the opening side, till 8:00 a.m. Client anticipates that breakfast will make up a significant portion of the business and they would like to have the opportunity to offer alcohol sales during breakfast service. This would be sort of typical breakfast-type cocktails, mimosas, things of that nature. Currently, the license held by Deli King has extended.
Just going to pause, just super quick, how about closing? So that's, you know, that's a change request from 11:00 to 8:00, how about, how about serving?
There's no request to extend the closing time, so there's, there's no request to go beyond 11:00 a.m.
Okay, sorry, okay.
The existing Deli King license does have that extension to 1:00 a.m. on the closing side. We're not asking for that. We're basically just looking to shift that extended hours from the evening to the morning. Both Mr. Liu and Ms. Zhang are experienced restaurant owners. They've got three establishments operating in Billrica, Stelios Family Restaurant, operating since 2016, Jade Pacific since 2018, and Chungking Mike's Place, new this year. Ms. Zhang also has an interest in the Woxang Restaurant in Lowell since 2014. These are responsible restaurant owners, they've been successful. The establishments that they've been operating, they're looking to obviously expand here in Tuxbury. Ms. Zhang is the proposed manager of record. Again, she's an experienced restaurant owner, she's served as manager of record in other establishments. She's well aware of her responsibilities and obligations. Both my clients are, are well aware that having a liquor license granted is a privilege, not a right, and comes with serious responsibilities, and they take that very seriously. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think that our application submission was complete, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much. All right, let's open up the board for discussion. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, three other establishments, do all three establishments have liquor license currently?
They do.
Awesome. And in the past, any concerns? It sounds like 2016 was the earliest for those three?
2016 was the, the first one, Stelios. None of the establishments have any history of liquor license infractions with, with Billrica.
Awesome. I have no further questions. I will say that Deli King is a Tuxbury landmark, and I wish you guys well and, you know, do it justice.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. How about Mr. Johnson?
Just two questions, Mr. Chairman, through you to counsel. You mentioned your client intends to be manager of record with the multiple holdings that they have, does she intend to be located here in Tuxbury?
So, yeah, so she'll be splitting time amongst the restaurants. There, I think there is a plan once things are up and running, and I know this is provided for under your local regulations, to have someone named as an assistant manager, so they wouldn't be the functional manager of record with all the responsibilities entailed with that, but there would be someone on the premises at all times who would be designated. And once that, once the restaurant's up and running, that person is hired and designated, we can certainly provide that information to the town.
Okay, thank you. All right, my second question, excuse me, pertains to the hours that you're looking for on the liquor license. So I understand the early opening that you're asking for at 8:00 a.m. as opposed to the current 11:00 a.m. on the license. Is your client amenable if the board were to consider reducing the closing hours from the current 1:00 a.m. down to the 11:00 p.m. that you've indicated?
Yes, yeah, so there's no request for that extension to 1:00 a.m. We're, we're only looking up to 11:00 p.m., which is provided by statute. The only extension is on the morning side.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, how about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming here before us and the thorough application that you provided. It made for a good reading. I would, I do have some questions. I just want you to know that I have always been a vocal board member, not in favor of early morning liquor hours, so I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, that this is not, has anything to do with this application, this is just a matter of practice for me. I am curious, and the town manager is, I just have a quick question, I'm sorry. How many establishments, I know that we have, have some function halls that have 8:00 in the morning, but how many restaurants? Because this would not be a function hall, this would be a restaurant, correct?
Correct. The only one is Zwamaset Lanes.
And they have private parties in that? Would you be, are you guys planning on that? I, I just have to tell you that I am not in favor of an 8:00 a.m. liquor license for a restaurant.
I don't believe there's any plans for private events, but I'll, I'll let my client dress up.
So, hi, my name is Michael.
Hi, Michael.
So, the reason why we request for AM license is sometimes, I own Stelios in Billrica, it's a breakfast place, so sometimes customers will come in, they want a mimosa, they want something to drink with their breakfast. It's not like we're going to sell, well, if, whatsoever, they're going to ask for, for a favorite drink, but it's not something that we want to push. And it will be a full-service restaurant, so I believe in Tuxbury, there, there are only maybe one or two breakfast places, and they don't have a liquor license to start with. So this is just a, I think it's added convenience, added favorite to, to Tuxbury residents, so they don't have to go out of town to get a mimosa on the, in the morning, you know? And it's not like we sell hundreds of mimosas, everything. It's very light across sales, but, you know, we want to have the option, so, so the residents will have a, have an option.
Do your other restaurants, do they breakfast type, they're not, correct? They're not?
They have breakfast. We serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
And they all have 8:00 a.m.?
That's correct. Yep.
I do have a question. If I were, is there a way to pull the liquor license out, or is it a part of the entire application?
No, you can make it, you can make separate changes to it if you want.
Okay.
That's what you voted on.
I just want to hear the other members before, I just am curious.
But just case in point, just for clarification, Ms. Tronick, they already have the license, it's just essentially they're asking to extend the hours, right? So.
They're asking, the current liquor hours are 11:00, not 8:00 a.m., correct?
Right, right.
So they would need our approval to go to 8:00 a.m.?
Correct, yep.
Yep.
All right, we're on the same page, thank you.
And for the transfer, right?
Yeah, and for the transfer, you're, you're transferring the ownership license.
So that's why I'm asking if one can be separated from the other.
Thank you, okay, makes sense.
That question. But I would like to hear my other board members before any motions are made, so.
Sure, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, how about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the applicants for their complete application, there's a lot of, a lot of documentation here. I read through it, and you have fans in the area, so I've heard many compliments also of your management in some of your other facilities, being very customer-friendly and responsive. So that's, that's really good to hear, and I'm excited about you taking a chance in Tuxbury.
Thank you.
And investing in our community, so I appreciate that. I wanted to understand a couple of things. Your liquor license is, is a request for 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday?
That's correct.
So every day you want to have it at 9:00 a.m.?
So I believe Sunday is from 10:00 a.m.
Yeah, I think Sunday's a little bit different, okay. All right, and then, tell me about your entertainment license request. It seemed that you were looking at karaoke, television, bingo, recorded music.
So, television, we're going to have TVs in the bar, so obviously we need a.
Red Sox game, that kind of thing.
Right, exactly, exactly. Music, bingo, it's like, maybe we get it once a week, and, and, you know, Wednesday night.
Okay.
You know, same thing for, any, it's, it's not going to be an entertainment hall, it's going to be once a week sort of thing, you know, come on Monday night, on a slow night, we can have some, you know, music, bingo, or whatever the thing is. So that's, that's why the, the entertainment license.
Okay, so DJs are not part of this, like Saturday night?
We don't have any plans for DJ. Well, we do have a, a plan for, they call it jukebox.
Yep.
Where customers can put a dollar, they put, play a couple songs, and you can hook up your phone.
Touch tunes, you can, yep, got it.
So it's all electronic, so that's a plan.
Okay, so my, my concern is that some of your neighbors, potential neighbors, have raised an issue about noise, and what might be that potential noise and the impact to the community.
They'll be.
Because there are a lot of resi, well, there's a lot of residents right there, and there's also a long-term assisted living and skilled care facility that's a little bit behind your most abutting neighbor to the rear. And so I just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about what the expectation would be regarding sound.
Yeah, that won't be, it will be contained within the perimeter of the building. It won't be like a rod bangle.
Yeah?
Yep, so it's basically very limited.
Yeah, just for, yeah, okay.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. And then your Common Victroler license is, is the same thing you're looking for, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.?
I don't know what's on that.
Or 6:00 a.m.?
Yeah, I believe the application was.
Six or seven.
Was 7:00 a.m. was the, was the start.
The, the question that my colleague raised around the 8:00 a.m. opening, I think, is an important one for our community, because I'm, I, I understand the mimosa, Bloody Mary, market, and the, and the morning and the breakfast, you know, brunch sort of market. It's an important and growing market in this area. To your point, Tuxbury does not have many facilities that compete in that particular space. So I think that the competition piece is interesting, and my concern is, you know, just that early morning hour. And so I appreciate you bringing that forward, and I'm considering.
From, to be honest with you, from my experience, you know, people don't come in, get, get drunk with mimosa in, early in the morning, you know?
No, they don't.
Exactly, so that's, that's, that's why I think it's, it's reasonable request. Again, we're not, we're not a, my, my point, my goal is not make that a, a dive bar. My goal is to make that a, a full-service dining experience place where people want to go in, go with your friends in the morning, you know? If you want to have a mimosa, have a mimosa. You have a, have a Bloody Mary, have a Bloody Mary, but, you know, it's not like, hey, let's go, go, go get drunk in, in the morning, that's not, that's not my goal.
No, it doesn't fit your branding.
Right, exactly.
I understand. All right, thank you very much. I think I am inclined to approve these requests, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. So just through, Mr. Montori, I just want to level set here on the items that we're seeking to make votes on, because there's a lot in front of us. So keep me honest here, number one is the alterations, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Number one, alterations. Number two would be application for Common Victroler license?
Correct.
Number three, application for entertainment license, which we just discussed.
Correct.
And then number, number four, application for transfer of the liquor license.
Correct.
That's fourth, and fifth, but least associated with that is the hour change for the liquor licenses from 11:00 to 8:00 for Monday through Saturday, and Sunday would be a standard default of, of 10:00, 10:00 o'clock, correct?
Correct.
So there's five.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm thinking of it wrong, but thank you, I apologize.
All good?
My bad.
Okay, so that'd be five votes altogether independently.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, fair enough. Very impressive, four restaurants today, correct?
Yes.
I think we've all been to a few of those, so, well done, so, really excited that you purchased it. My only recommendation, if, if this passes, I would keep the boot. I don't know if you've ever heard of the boot, but it's very popular at Deli King, so, just food for thought. I don't want to get ahead of myself, but just saying, so. With that being said, I, I don't have any further questions, but we're going to come back to the board. So I'm going to pause now, if the board's satisfied. Are there any residents that would like to speak on, on this particular, on these particular item, items? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public?
Before I do, Mr. Chairman, just, I know our packet's included the October 14 correspondence from residents of Newton Terrace, I just want to note for the record that we received it. It looks to me like there are, you know, 10 or 12 individuals who signed it, so we should acknowledge that. I know no one's here, but.
Thank you.
It's been referenced in our conversation, but I want to put it in the record.
Thank you very much.
Good idea.
Okay, so, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion and a second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, all right, back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board? Again, we have four different items, we'll take it separately for each item, please.
Mr. Chairman, what's the first one? What's question one?
Alteration.
Alterations, okay.
Alterations.
I make a motion that we approve the alterations proposed by the applicant.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, 5-0. So let's take the next, next one, is application for the Common Victroler license.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, 5-0. Next, application for entertainment license.
I'll move to approve as the current hours of 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, a second by Ms. Tronick, all's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries 5-0. Next would be the application for transfer liquor license.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, a second by Ms. Wellman, all's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. And last but not least, would be the final motion to approve the hours requested at 8:00 a.m., 8:00 a.m. start as opposed to 11:00 a.m. start, and on Sundays as well from, I think, just, let's keep me honest here, Mr. Montori, on Sunday, what are the current hours, is it 10:00 as is?
It says noon.
I think it's, I thought it was 11:00.
The current license is 12:00 noon.
12:00 noon?
I'm sorry.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so in combination, it'd be 8:00 Monday through Saturday, and then for Sunday would be 12:00 noon, and you're asking for 10:00, which is the Commonwealth, the ABCC's, okay, guidelines for our town or community, okay. So with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the change in hours requested reflecting Monday through Saturday liquor service from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM and Sunday 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. So that's to approve the changes, correct, Mr. Johnson?
To make those requests to change, two changes, 8:00 AM and also 11:00 PM. Current license has longer hours on the backend.
Okay, very good. So I have a motion in a second. So again, this is to approve the new hours. So all's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No.
No, so the motion carries 4-1. Congratulations, thank you very much, and welcome to the town of Tewksbury. Looking forward to visiting you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. When will you be opening?
Well, hopefully next year. We'll have to renovate. We have a plan over to, plans to make the exterior much more appealing.
Well, we look forward to it.
Mics on mains. I love it, I love it. All right, thank you again, congratulations, good luck. Thank you. Thanks, thanks again, good luck. Bye-bye. Next order of business is the residence section. Do we have any residents that would like to speak? Seeing none? Okay, why don't we move to new business, new business? The first order of business is town clerk, 2020 re-presenting plan. Denise Graffio. I think you're going to share, you're going to shift the screen? I'm going to slide over. All right, perfect.
I think Mr. Montori is going to be my technical assistant with the PowerPoint.
Correct. You're in trouble then. Exactly.
Good evening for the residents. My name is Denise Graffio and I'm town clerk here in Tewksbury. I'm here tonight to present to you for your consideration the proposed Town of Tewksbury re-presenting map based on the 2020 census. But before doing so, I'd like to give you a little background information to explain how we got here. Tewksbury's 2020 federal population is 31,342 residents, which represents an increase of 2,381 compared to the 2010 census, or an 8.2% increase. The federal census is performed, as most of you know, once every 10 years. And once the data is released, each city and town is required by law to establish board and precinct lines. No precinct may contain over 4,000 residents and every precinct's population must be within 5% of the average. Normally, under state law, cities and towns would update their precinct lines first and then the state lawmakers use our precincts as the building blocks for the congressional, state senate, and state representative districts. But this year was a little different. The collection of the 2020 census data was affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and the release of the census data was delayed for about two months, a little over two months. In early October, Governor Baker signed into law legislation that officially reverses the order. This act essentially forces us to shape our precincts around the state's set boundaries. And unfortunately, it appears that the legislature is using our 2010 precinct boundaries to draw their 2020 districts. And if we move to the next slide, I can demonstrate what that means for us.
Shall I go to, I'll go to the maps itself?
So, yep, so this is the proposed senate plan and, let's see, Tewks, oh, okay. It looks like Tewksbury and the senate plan is whole. Let's see, right above Wilmington, next to Bill Ricker Lowell. It's not labeled on this map.
It's not labeled on their map. For some reason, they didn't label it.
I don't know why, but we figured out where we are. So smart.
And the district runs up to Amesbury.
Right, so this district is currently Senator Finegold's district. And so that, there will be no issue with split precincts on the senate side of things. On the house side of things, if we can pull up the house proposed map.
Hold on for one second, I did this wrong. Give me one second. I don't have the house.
How does this affect us?
We're going to go through.
Sorry.
I'm going, I'm going to explain when we get to the house map, how it's affecting us.
One second. Sorry about that.
So as, as Mr. Montori is looking to pull up the house map, it, it basically will affect us because it's going to divide us into three House of Representatives districts. As some of you know, right now, we currently have two representative districts. So currently, we in the house have the 19th Middlesex District, which is currently represented by David Robertson. And we also have precincts 3 and 3A are in the 18th Essex District, which is currently represented by Tram Nguyen. This proposal that the state has not voted on yet, but it's in a joint committee to, to do that. And we have the proposed maps were released last Tuesday, adds the 17th Middlesex District to the Town of Tewksbury. It's going to take, which is our precinct 1, and it's going to pull it into the district that is currently represented, represented by Vanna Howard and the majority of it is in Lowell.
I did warn you of what Mr. Montori's skills.
I know.
You did.
We still don't have it up here.
Okay.
Still the senate, no.
There we go. Okay, so if we can scroll into Tewksbury, we can see kind of, sort of what's happening there. So you can see the 17th Middlesex is in yellow and that's our precinct 1A that they are designating to be in the 17th Middlesex District.
Mrs. Graffio, is it 1 or 1A or both?
It's 1.
1, okay, thank you.
It's just one precinct.
That's what I thought.
So what that means and the fact that they used our 2010 boundary, we are stuck to that boundary as well.
I'll go to the next.
As well as the precinct 3 and 3A boundaries, which are in Tram Nguyen's district. So as I said earlier, we're required to create precincts that have no more than 4,000 residents. Okay, so this is our 2010 precinct map. How I know they're using our 2010 districts is because that shape from precinct 1 is the same as the shape on the proposed house map. Same at the top, you'll see precincts 3 and 3A, that also is the same. So because the legislature used our old boundaries and they essentially went first, we have no leeway to change those boundaries when it comes to state elections. And so I need to look at those and try to create a map for Tewksbury that has no more than 4,000 residents which, within each precinct and doesn't go above or below the 5% differential. So the next slide is the proposed Tewksbury map. This is a, a map that was developed within the last two days with assistance from the Secretary of State Census Division and minimizes the effect of having multiple split voting precincts. So this map will minimize that and we will only have one split precinct, which means that basically the top northern portion of the yellow precinct 5 will be a different representative than the rest of precinct 5. So when Tewksbury voters go into their precincts, if they are in precinct 5 and this map is adopted, we will have two separate ballots. So the, the voters in the northern part will be voting for the 18th Essex District and below, I want to say it might be North Street, below will be voting in the 19th Middlesex District. And if for some reason the situation changes in our favor, we have been in contact, Mr. Montori and I, and I believe a few of the selectmen have been in contact with our delegates to try to lobby for them to at least use our precinct boundaries when they're creating their districts to eliminate what will likely be voter confusion. It will cost us more money because we'll be printing a whole set of different ballots and we'll have to purchase a new machine and hire, hire staff to, to manage that. But like I was saying, if for some reason the situation changes in our favor, which I don't believe that it will, we do have the ability to redraw, go back, and if this gets approved, we still have until December 15th to go back and redraw to eliminate the split precinct situation.
And Mr. Chairman, if I just may jump in, under the proposed house district that splits the town into three legislative districts, it's important to note that the Town of Tewksbury will not have a majority of registered voters in any of the districts, which will impact whether a resident of this community in the future has an opportunity to be the state representative. So it's just, it, it's an impact to this community as far as representation goes. I know we'll have three reps, but as far as representation from the town itself, it, it becomes more difficult.
So at this point, I am presenting this proposed Tewksbury map. It's the best that I can do given the circumstances. And in order to move forward with this process and submit to the LEDRC, the Local Elections District Review Commission, the Board of Selectmen must approve the map as well as the legal description of the boundaries, which there's been so many moving parts this week, I still need to formalize that and present that to you once I'm able to do that, work with the GIS coordinator to, to formalize the legal descriptions of these boundaries once approved.
Well, we're thinking of, Mr. Chairman, after tonight's meeting, when the town clerk and the GIS coordinator formalize the, the boundaries, the narrative, if there could be a special meeting, even if it's an early morning meeting next week, to just approve the map and the boundary together, just so we have it done in time.
So we're going to have, I'm sure the board's going to have a lot of questions, but, so just, just to level set, we're probably, let's not, let's not take action on this, this evening because this is fluid and we're going to propose, you're going to continue to try to push our town's agenda slash map, what we believe, what you believe, what the office believes is correct versus what the Commonwealth is putting together. Is that a fair statement?
We, we will continue to try. I don't know that, you know, speaking with legal counsel from the Secretary of State's Office as well as people that have been working on the census map, it doesn't seem that the House of Representatives has any plans to take into consideration the problems that are being caused by the local boundaries not being used to formulate their districts.
Okay. Mr. Montori?
No, it, it, just to follow up on that, we've, we've spoke, as the town clerk has mentioned, we've spoken to the delegation both collectively and individually and the message seems to be that this is done. It's just a matter of the vote.
So I'm going to, I'm going to open up the board, but then I pose the question, why even bother with this exercise, right?
Well, we need to do it for the town itself.
Because we have to.
We have to do it, yet we're not going to listen to what you were proposing anyways. I'm getting ahead of myself. I rather, I should open up to the board and be careful. And with fairness to the delegation, we did ask them to come in, but it was late notice. So I think once we have some of the conversation this evening, let's make, we'll make an earnest effort to reach back to our delegation and have a special meeting next week, you know, to continue with the process prior to, just put something on the map for next week and see if we can't get the delegation in as well. Okay, so I'm going to pause.
Sounds good.
Oh, any?
Sounds good.
Okay, let's, how about, let's open up the board? I'm sure we have a lot of questions. So how about Mr. Mackey, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start by commending Mr. Montori and Ms. Graffio and her staff for jumping through the hoops to make this work. At this time, I don't have any questions for the clerk. I've had a number of discussions with members of the delegation and I can say that Mr. Montori's, the sentiment he received is pretty much what I received as well. This is it. They don't, it's unlikely any changes are made and we got to work with it. So I have no questions at this time.
How about Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think my colleagues have a sense of how I feel about this issue already because I've communicated to the delegation, both in writing and by phone conversation, about the topic. It's interesting, somewhat disappointing that the process was changed. I know that, at least in part, was triggered by COVID and that is certainly an understandable situation. But it kind of strikes me as the left arm and the right arm didn't work well together in this instance. In the past, the legislature relied on local-based clerks who know the local landscape to create the map and they adopted in large pot the local input. And here, we're using something that's 10 years old, which defeats the whole point of the federal census. And in my opinion, it disenfranchises many people in Tewksbury. I happen by coincidence to live in precinct 1, so I'm impacted, but that's not why I view it that way. I feel that when you had the map up, I won't ask you to do it again, Mr. Montori. But when you put the map up showing the house proposed districts, I couldn't help but notice that our neighboring communities retained in their entirety intact for the most part. I know there are some exceptions.
Right there, see, I did it.
Thank you. There are some exceptions, but Tewksbury appears to be the odd man out, if you will, in that we're kind of cut up into three zones. Bill Ricker looks like it's intact to me. Andover, North Reading, all appear to be, Wilmington, I think, is in its entirety. So we are impacted, in my opinion, disproportionately to our surrounding communities. And I have to believe that, that that will have a negative effect on advancing Tewksbury interests on Beacon Hill. One, one view may be that there's three voices. Another is that as a precinct that has a majority representative from the city of Lowell, for example, I don't believe the issues are always going to be consistent. In fact, in many cases, they may be at odds from a urban community to a suburban community. And if the Tewksbury precinct is the minority voter population in that district, there literally is the potential for no representation on numerous issues. And that, I have, you know, utmost confidence in those people sitting in those seats at the moment. This is not about the elected representatives from Lowell, for example, but I can see problems for people in precinct 1 in Tewksbury. It wasn't long ago when we sat at this table where we had one state representative representing our community. And now we're going to three. To me, that's diluting our interests on Beacon Hill. If the senate can do it and keep Tewksbury intact, I think that the, the House of Representatives can do it and find a way. All of the responses that I've had mirror what has been stated previously, that it's basically a done deal. But I'm compelled to raise my dissatisfaction with that process. So I've already made those feelings known to the delegation. I don't know if there's need to bring them in for me to repeat that movie, but it's a concern representing the town here, at least in, in my, my view. So that's all I have. I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Great points, Mr. Johnson. How about Ms. Stronach?
So I, before the meeting, I had the opportunity to thank my colleague, Mr. Johnson, for his very concise and direct letter to our delegation. I am of the mindset that this is a done deal as well. I am disappointed that is a done deal and I do believe that it negatively impacts our community. For the reasons that you spoke about of urban and suburban, but more importantly, because I think it makes one of our residents less likely to become one of those representatives in the future because you would have to work incredibly hard to win an election in that. work incredibly hard to win an election in that area. So that is a, is a big problem for me, because I think that is important to have people that live in our community voicing for us. And certainly, the urban and suburban is quite, quite different. So I really want to thank Mr. Johnson for his letter. I don't know how long that took to write, but I know for me to do that, it would have taken quite a bit of time. And I also want to appreciate the fact that it was done in such a professional manner that his disdain for it was a little bit minus from the letter. So I appreciated that as well. It's true. And I have no questions. And while the delegation was not able to attend tonight, and they view this as us gaining representation, I am disappointed that we're not having some kind of formal notice from them saying, hey, here's why we think this will work for you, or whatever that may be. But I understand it's shot notice, but it was also shot notice for us, and we had to act. So I just want to say that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Tronick. How about Ms. Wilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On last Tuesday, the maps were printed in the Boston Globe, or there are links, and I looked at them then, and I filed testimony with the committee, because while the maps were printed on Tuesday, the testimony was due on Friday, before we even had a chance to meet as a board, which speaks again to what I think is a flawed process at the state level. I want to reiterate my colleagues' thanks and appreciation for the work of Mrs. Graffio and your staff, and Mr. Montori and all the other, everybody that participated. I know it takes more than a year to work on this. It's not something that our staff put together. It takes a long time, there's a lot of trainings that go into this work, and it's, it's serious business because it's elections. And I think we all understand that elections are serious business. And so when the legislature made this move and the governor, which I find interesting, since Governor Baker has always campaigned on his local experience and his interest in local control, would, would sign this into, into law, makes it very difficult for our staff to do the things that they need to do and, and make these maps work and make our elections easy to understand and easy for our public and our residents to vote in. So I shared my disappointment with the committee. I did talk to our delegation on Friday, and, and I appreciated Mr. Johnson's letter as well, that he did share with us. And I spoke to Mrs. Graffio as well, because it's complicated. I don't like the Senate district either for us. I don't think, I think it stretches us out and it weakens us when the district. I think this patchwork quilt of, of three, three districts for our House representation isn't efficacious for us for the reasons already mentioned, that it makes it harder for a resident to be, get elected in one of those districts, but it also dilutes our influence within our own districts. Because if we're a minority district in each one of those districts, our voices isn't as strong. And that is not to say that our current delegation is not listening to us. I think that we, we have a, I share a good relationship with them, and I feel I can reach out to them on any issue and advocate. It's not, it's not about those individuals, but the numbers and the math is going to remain as we go forward. So I think that it's, it does disadvantage us. So I'm glad we're not voting on this map tonight. Part of the reason that the legislature needs this map approved, correct me if I am wrong, is because it's a little bit self-serving, in my opinion, because the representatives need to live in their district for one year prior to their election. Is that right? Or prior to their running?
Correct.
Correct.
So these have to be approved so that they can live in their district in case their district moved. Okay? So it's, it's more about protecting their districts and their ability to run than it is about providing really good local elections for our residents, in my opinion. So I'm glad we're not approving this tonight. I know you've got a lot more work to do on this. That's going to consume a lot of your time over the next week or so, and I want to thank you again for your continued work and diligence in that effort. And I support what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. So a lot being said, I don't need to waste words or repeat myself. But Ms. Graffio, there must be other, out of the 350-plus towns and cities in Massachusetts, obviously, some aren't going to be affected because their numbers might not grow. But I'm looking at this map, you know, like I said, 350 towns and cities. One would think that a lot of other communities might be in the same boat where they're throwing their hands up, saying, wait a minute, you, you know, you're telling us what it should look like, but we're telling you kind of how it should look like. So based on the conference call last week, I believe that was just a public hearing for this very subject?
Yes.
Were the other communities, towns, or cities kind of saying the same thing?
There are many other communities that are facing the same thing. The Secretary of State's office legal counsel has been lobbying to have them work with us and use our local boundaries for their maps to no avail. It seems that the Senate side is, is working to use those precinct boundaries, but for some reason, I'm hearing that the House has no intention to work with us.
To no avail. That's why government drives people nuts, you know. We, we all get, I think it's very logical to, to, to most right now, and yet, you know, levels above us, it's not so logical. You know, and I, again, I don't look about getting elected in these communities, but it's really, you know, diluting our representation. I, for me, it's that simple.
So, Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, there are many other communities that are dealing with this. Any community that is, has split districts is dealing with this, basically, whether it's on the Senate side or the House side, because they used the 2010 boundaries. So we had a particular large growth in our precincts 3 and 3A. So if we're stuck with that boundary and that population, we can't go over 4,000, and we can't go above or under that 5%, it really limits how we can draw our boundaries to not have split precincts, meaning that you go into one precinct and you have two separate ballots. You're, you're voting on two separate representative races in one precinct. In early voting and vote by mail, we will have, in a state primary, we will have 12 ballot styles that could potentially be given to a voter.
So more cost on Tuxbury, heck of a lot of confusion. It's gonna, this is gonna take some time to get used to, based on the redistricting. So it's just confusing at many different levels and potentially, I'm gonna say the word unfair. So let's, I'm gonna pause there. Let's talk about next steps, because again, we're not gonna take an action on this. Hopefully, that was clear to the residents. You know, this is very, this just came at us 100 miles an hour, and hopefully, Ms. Graffio, we kind of painted a picture of the, the impact, the potential impact here to Tuxbury. So let's talk about next steps. What do you recommend next step? Seems like, seems like the fight isn't over. We have more homework to do. However, the gut feeling based on feedback from representatives, it's a done deal. So keep on working with us. You tell us what it should look like to some degree. However, we're still going with Plan A, which was drafted last week. Do you know when the next vote is, like, to officially, make this official? Do you know by chance?
The Special Joint Committee had, I think, had up until Monday to, for residents or anybody to submit comments, to submit testimony. I don't know when the vote is scheduled for. I haven't seen it. I've been, I've been kind of checking the website here and there between drawing lines to see when that might be happening.
I believe Senator Feingold is on that committee?
I believe he is.
Maybe we can ask him when the vote is.
I was gonna say, we don't need a motion, but Mr. Montori, could you please take that ash on behalf of the board to say, when is the, let's call it the official vote, and that will help us?
I can find out.
Okay. Thank you. So let's, I'll, but I'm back.
Mr. Chairman, just one other comment. I, people should, I think, appreciate, I don't anticipate there's another bite at the apple down the road, so this is a 10-year era. This is something that's going to affect Tuxbury potentially from 2020 to 2030. That's a long time. And right now, just to underscore what was just said, right, if you live in precincts 3 or 3A currently, when you go to the ballot box, you're, you're voting for a state rep. Everyone in those two precincts votes for the same state rep seat. Under the split precinct that you're describing in, in our current Precinct One, you will have people that go in Precinct One to the ballot, and they will be voting for one state house seat or another. Your next-door neighbor could be in a completely different district. It makes no sense.
Right.
None at all. So think about all of the conversations we have currently across the country about trust in the electoral process, about transparency of the electoral process, and what we have here is more confusion. And that's going to be borne here at the local level. There's not anyone on Beacon Hill that's going to come and explain that to a confused voter. It's going to be your staff, who are volunteers for the most part on Election Day. That's a tall order to ask, and I think we're being let down in that front. So I'm sorry to get back on my soapbox.
No, that's fine. That's fine. No, it's, the words well said. So let's just, we'll get it back. So we have, do we actually see, when is the official vote, number two? Ms. Graffio, can you tell us kind of what's ahead in the next week? Again, maybe the fight's not over, but we gotta continue to take a bite of that apple, even though it's rotten, I guess, for lack of better words.
So we've been advised to move forward with select board approval of a proposed map, with the thought being that it has, it still has to go to the LEDRC to get approval. And if there's any, if there's any way that they look back at it, we will have something in place to say. This is, this is, like I said, we worked based on the reality of what we think is coming down the pike for this to be minimally disruptive to our, our elections.
Okay. How about, one more thought was a coalition, just to continue to beat the drum. I'll, I'll be, you know, it could be a potential waste of time, but what about casting a big net across the Commonwealth to say, hey, we had our meeting, the board, our community is shaking our heads. Put that big net out to form a coalition for like communities, cities, and towns that are potentially in our same boat, scratching their head. To Mr. Johnson's point, that could be impacted for 10-plus years based on this decision. You think that's worthwhile, or at the end of the day, it's just, you know, cockamamie idea?
Just be, be a lot to do in a short period of time. If you look at that map, you know, the map we had up there, we're one of the few communities impacted, you know, this way. It looked like many communities were kept whole. So I'm not sure what type of, if we could put a coalition together, you would think our delegation would do that within the State House, because that would be the easiest, but that doesn't sound like it's happening. So.
All right. I'm just, down for dollars, looking for options, because I heard on that conference call, I think, to name one, Chumsford was one of those potential towns that very impacted, very much so, just like Tuxbury would be, correct? And I'm just calling Chumsford out because that was on the.
Yes, Chumsford.
Chumsford was impacted, yep. There were some Senate districts that were impacted. I think Haverhill, there was a big discussion on Haverhill, concerns there. I know the town of Winchester was concerned, Sudbury was concerned, but.
Lexington.
Yeah.
The response from the committee chairman was really none. They didn't really seem to, for lack of a better word, care.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you do approve this proposed map that I have brought before you, and something does change, we still have another bite at the apple. We can go back and redraw and submit another map. This isn't, this isn't, doesn't have to be a done deal. If, if we have an option to, to do something better, I can bring it back to you and present that to you as well.
Okay. So just, Ms. Wilman?
I just had a couple of things. One, what if we don't approve it? You just don't approve it. Does that give them some sort of fiat power to just say, okay, well, you don't do it, we're gonna do it? Or?
They're, yeah, they're gonna do it.
They're gonna do it. Okay. That's what I want to ask, because I can't thank you enough about it. So that was that. And then the other point I wanted to make, building on what Mr. Johnson said and Mr. Montori said regarding some communities being kept whole, Wilmington was a split community before. One of their precincts was held with Ken Gordon, who's Bedford and Burlington. And so Wilmington's now been made whole in this new map as, I think, 19th Middlesex?
19th.
Mr. Robertson's current seat is now all of Wilmington and a portion of Tuxbury. So it's interesting that they, they kind of created a patchwork out of Tuxbury and made us three when Wilmington was two, and we were two. So I think that that's an interesting thing to put on the record. So.
Okay. And just in summary, then, let's, let's, let's see if we can wrap this up. So, Mr. Montori, you're gonna see when the official voters, you're gonna reach out to Barry. And so let's pause. What's the recommendation based on what, you know, do we want to wait and have a special meeting next week with this very topic?
We should have a special meeting next week. Let us finalize the narrative, the written boundaries. Get that to the board, get this map to the board, and then have a meeting maybe sometime around Wednesday or Thursday of next week. Could do it early morning if you want.
And just for the residents, oh, Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Just one, one point. And I'm not gonna ask the, the administration or the town clerk take on more work, but if, if I have my facts correct, you had already prepared a redistricting based on the 2020 numbers?
I did.
Somehow, I'd like to incorporate that as, this is what we would have done. This is the way it should have been done in our communication. I don't expect that they will acquiesce and recognize it, but there's absolutely no harm in putting forward, this was the best practice. And the result that we're being forced to adopt is something that is substandard by comparison.
We can have that map presented when the board meets next week, and the board could have that in the record of the board minutes.
Incorporated as an addendum or something to that.
The one problem with that, if we did submit that map, right, this map minimizes the split precincts to one. That map, we would have five. We would have a scenario where a voter would walk into any one of five precincts and have two different ballots.
Yeah, which we don't want.
That would be even more chaotic.
Okay. So we can rethink that.
But I do understand your point, that if there's ever a situation where they say, miraculously, hey, we do want to use your boundaries, I have that, I have that map, and I, I believe that we did share that with, with the board.
Yes, same with the delegation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're gonna take no vote. So we're gonna have a meeting next week. The resident section is closed, and this is a, this is a big one. So I think in fairness to the residents, they can reach out to the Board of Selectmen's Office and for comments, and we'll also have public comments next week. Any target day, we'll shoot for a meeting for Tuesday or Wednesday, any, what your?
I'd say Wednesday or Thursday probably gives us more time to get the information together. Is that right?
I'm gonna start working on that tomorrow.
And I know how much work you've put into it. That's why you're so frustrated, you know, just like us, so I can't thank you enough and staff for all the work you've done. So.
Mr. Chairman, just as far as resident comments, I mean, they, obviously, they can call the, our office easily, but they should call the delegation.
I was just gonna say.
They should call the delegation and voice their concerns.
Sometimes they will not know that. So they come through our office, and we supply the emails and the delegation's numbers as well. So I just don't want to shut them out. And we'll have another opportunity next week as well, when we have another meeting. So good call out. So, so with that being said, I think that's the end of, I think that's the end of that new business, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks again. I can't thank you enough, and we'll talk next week, and I'm sure we'll have correspondence in the meantime as well. So.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Next. Next order of business is, I don't have the revised agenda. I know we changed it on the request of some of the residents, just for clarity. So what was the agenda item I said? I had mass housing letter? I know I changed it.
It's changed to 300 Ames Pond Mass Housing Letter for Chapter 40B.
And that made perfect sense. I mean, just for the, for the residents, that made perfect sense, just to be more, just to be clear. So, Mr. Montori, the floor is yours. Want to just give kind of the residents what this is all about, why we're doing this, and then we'll have, we'll open up to the board for questions, comments, please.
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town. The town received a letter from Mass Housing that they received an application from the Hanover from the Hanover Company regarding a 40B at 300 Ames Pond. There was an app, the application was forwarded to the community for review and comment. That comment period was supposed to end on October 13th. Mass Housing granted us a two week extension. The application, when we received it from Mass Housing, was provided to all of the department heads. It was provided to all of our boards and committees to provide comments. From the comments, and it was provided, obviously, residents had an opportunity to review it also and provide comments, specifically the abutters to the parcel. We received comments through an email that was set up by the Board of Selectmen. Through the comments that we received from residents, from department heads, from boards and committees, we generated a response letter to Mass Housing. We attached every comment document that we received as exhibits to the letter. This past Friday, the Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick and myself met with abutters 2300 Ames Pond to review the letter. We made changes to our original letter and edits to our original letter based on input and comments from the abutters. I believe it was a good meeting. I believe we received very good input and made the changes and agreed to the changes with the abutters. We finalized the draft of that letter, and we provided it and I provided it to the board this this weekend for review and hopefully for adoption tonight. I know there has been some comments made to for some edits by Selectmen Wellman. That seemed reasonable that we can go over tonight. If you want, I can pull the letter up on the screen.
Please.
If that helps.
Please.
Technology is being tested.
This should be easier than the map, right?
Well, you never know.
Being a wise guy tonight.
They didn't compress the data, so it blows up your computer every time you open it up. It's terribly poorly done.
This is the original letter that we finalized with the abutters and that I submitted to the board. If we just going down, I don't know, Selectmen Wellman, if you want me to talk about your comments or if you want to discuss them on page one?
Most of my comments were just to reduce ambiguous language. I got it. I got it, it's fine. Were to reduce ambiguous language and or or kind of strengthen the language. So they were and they were mostly minor. I thought that the letter was well done. I was really excited to see that there was considerable resident and abutter input. And I think the letter was substantive. So my 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 comments and suggestions were kind of de minimis to that effort. So, for example, folks may know that I used to edit a couple of newspapers. And so I have some writing issues. So I don't know that it's efficacious for our time. Just to let you know, the Red Sox have already started playing. To go through these, the minutia here. But generally, it's something to eliminate the word potentially have and use the word create, which would be the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph. Yeah, sure. So if you look on the fifth paragraph right there, it says may potentially have several important detrimental impacts. I say the present design may create several important detrimental impacts. The next line down, it says and mitigated to the maximum extent possible. And I just say it should be mitigated and mitigated, period. So some of those are the nature of the changes, which I think strengthens the language that we're using. The second to last line says the main the main issues include, and I wrote the priority issues include, and I included stormwater as one of those issues. Stormwater runoff is a huge issue, and with a large body of water there, I think that that is, you know, important for us to include. On the next on the next page, I just changed the formatting of the bullet list.
This this paragraph you recommend to be bullets and not paragraphs.
Oh, yeah, right, so it wasn't bulleted. I suggested a bulleted list, which lays out the argument on some of their enforcement orders visually. Makes it a little bit stronger, I would say. I would I would leave it to my board to agree or disagree with that. I asked for to include the date of a special permit for approval. I changed that have been. My English teacher in in eighth grade would really be happy that I got rid of passive voice. I mean, I don't know, we don't really need to go down that road too too early far, because again, the writing and the substantive matters here remain intact. So, Mr. Montori, and to my my board, I don't know that we need to belabor this.
Yeah, the 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 changes recommended were truly edits. And just some wording, changing. We had we had one paragraph was in the first person, and then the third person, all in one paragraph, we changed that. Nothing substantive, the intent and content of the letter stayed the same. So Ms. Wellman's edits, I thought, were good and should be accepted, and we can make those changes.
Okay, let's pause there on the editing. Any questions on Ms. Wellman's comments or edits? Like I said, majority of edits, and they were just well done. Comments there, so we can move on along from there? Okay, very good. So, Mr. Montori, I don't know if we have more. I think you explained it well. So what I'd like to do is open it up to the board for questions, comments, concerns, or thoughts. And we will go from we will go from there. Sorry about that. So, Ms. Wellman?
Yeah, I'll just wrap up really quickly. Like I said, I was really glad to see that there was resident input on this letter. I appreciate the town manager and the assistant town manager taking the time, as you often do with projects, to sit down with with residents and concern concerned residents and abutters on issues. And you've done that time and time again. I'm glad to see that here again. A lot of the concerns I already have are listed out here. I have some environmental concerns. I have traffic mitigation sewer, all of the same concerns I've expressed previously. And I'm glad that we have also considerable amount of resident statements that were collected through the email address that the administrator set up to include with this letter to Mass Housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having reviewed the letter and then Ms. Wellman's edits to the letter, I have no questions and limited comments. I would say that potential issues after this long process and the various discussions, meetings we've had, input from residents, I think we've captured and distilled down the issues to a nice digestible format. And I am very happy to see that we were able to break out and after Ms. Wellman's edit, kind of bulletize those questions of previous concerns. I know that was something that didn't get hit on in every meeting or discussion, but was a very important point for past issues with their other site. That's all I've got.
Very good, thank you. How about Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add, Mr. Chairman. I I will say that I think the process unfolded in the manner in which I expected. And that is, we relied on the town manager, assistant town manager, and their management team in its entirety for the first pass at input to be the stewards for our community. We went further, as was explained by Mr. Montori, by inviting and allowing participation by directly affected abutters. And all the reports that I've heard about that interchange consistently through this process has led to, as has been described, a lot of information contained in what we potentially will approve tonight and submit on behalf of the town. So I think we're the last eyes on this. I don't see major changes from my standpoint. I think this represents my thinking in the aggregate. I think the folks that were involved with the process from the town's administration through the abutters and other interested parties kind of coalesced around the key and central concerns. And I think the summary of this letter is that, you know, potentially, if it's adopted by this board, and I certainly will speak for myself, that contingent on addressing the concerns registered, that this makes for a potentially good project. That's a big contingency, because those those concerns do have to be addressed. But I think the sentiment of this correspondence is consistent with my thinking. And I think it is a good work product that's been created by a broad section of our community and in conjunction with our town administration. So I'm supportive of it, inclusive of the edits that Ms. Wellman has offered.
Thank you. How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you so much. I am not going to belabor the points of my colleagues, but I agree with all the sentiments that were put forward. And what I appreciate most about this letter is I know the amount of time put forward by the work of the town manager, the assistant town manager, the planning department, and their team. And to put this into a concise document that is four pages long, I think is a work of art personally, because it is summarized in a way that makes sense to the reader and will be able to get through the entire document is what my hope is by having it in such a concise document. I want to note for the residents, and I think that this is important, that the final paragraph, which is the recommendation, is that the select board could support this project of a multifamily rental housing unit. I agree with that sentiment as well. But I do want to say that this also puts it before consideration in initiating the zoning board of appeals in the comprehensive permitting process. So that process will continue to take place and will have to address the concerns that Mr. Johnson just articulated so well. So I just want to make sure that the mitigation plans will still have to be considered by this town. And I look forward to attending those meetings and seeing this go forward. Again, this is a 40B project, and I think that's important for people to recognize. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. All right, short and sweet here. So there's been a lot of thanks, and there has been a ton of work, you know, internally here. But I also have to thank, big time thank, the abutters. I think we've gotten to the point where we realize it's the applicant's right to submit their application for a 40B. And I think what we're learning is what we know is it's our right to ask the right questions, to make considerations based on everything we talked about, from safety to water to sewer to traffic to populating the school. So I think it's a very, very well documented letter and really really robust. I mean, I've seen other communities have samples, and this one is trumps it. But here's what is my thought process is this letter contains a lot of meat and potatoes. And again, great feedback internally and and by the direct abutters and residents alike. But now what do we do with it? This is where the rubber meets the road. So, Mr. Montori, if you would not mind, let's outline the process, because we're going to, you know, it looks like we're all in favor of this letter. You know, we're going through, let's call it the process. But what's next steps? Because how do we know this is going to land in front of the ZBA? However, Hanover said they want to come to the table. So it's our job as a board, continue, all boards, you know, is to kind of, let's go to the negotiation. Now it's time to negotiate. All of these, put it in Hanover's bucket, see what they can or can't do, and start those negotiations with the hope that when we get to the ZBA, a lot of our concerns or asks, which have been prioritized, we see some traction, things get done based on the input. So I'll pause, I probably have a few more questions. But when is like, we're going to submit this, and time is money. I'm sure Hanover wants to put the pedal to the metal. So the sooner we can get to the negotiation tables, the sooner it's going to help us with the process. So maybe just outline for the residents and all the and for the residents watching, what's the next process when we do submit this letter formally?
Sure, so just just going back to some basic stuff information. So once if the board is comfortable with this letter, we'd ask that they vote to approve it, subject to the edits that Selectmen Wellman brought forward and authorized the chair to sign it. Once that's done, we'll find put the letter in a clean copy for Chairman Kelly to sign, send it to Mass Housing. And then we'll await Mass Housing's, what we believe will be approval of site suitability for this project. In the meantime, Hanover would like to start discussing mitigation. We have not engaged in any discussions yet with them. We've been focused on this letter being drafted and finalized. Before we speak with Hanover, we would like to talk with the Board of Selectmen about thoughts on mitigation, have special counsel meet with the selectmen to discuss thoughts on mitigation. And then, once we have that meeting, and that most likely would be, guessing would be an executive session, we'd have to double check that. Then we'd start discussions with Hanover. And that could all be done prior to them submitting to the ZBA or simultaneous to them submitting to the ZBA.
Would the chair of the ZBA be included in those conversations? Let's call them negotiation conversations, or would he or she not be?
I'd have to, I'd probably want to check with counsel on the best avenue in that regard, just to make sure, because the chairman of the ZBA will be sitting as a, you know, someone to approve their application or disapprove their application, so I'm not sure. At some point over the next couple of weeks, I would like the chairman of the ZBA to sit down with the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, myself and the assistant town manager and special counsel to go over the roadmap going forward, so everyone's understanding what needs to take place, any timelines that we need to be conscious of, as well as the role of each of the boards, because that's very important to make sure everyone stays in their lanes. And we'll probably do that sooner than later.
Okay, and just for the residents, we do have a special counsel meeting. We do have a lawyer that specializes specifically in 40B-like projects in this in this process, just to let the residents know.
And then just I don't know if the assistant town manager has anything to add to that, but I think that's pretty much everything.
Since we brought up the topic of special town council, the the letter was sent for his review. The letter was based on a template that we had received from him. So I would expect that it would come back clean from him, but just so that everyone's aware, there are legal eyes that are on it also.
Thank you, Mr. Sadwick. I might have, I might bounce back. We set a law, but let me let me open up to the board. Any more questions from the board based on our conversation? Ms. Stronach?
I just have one question regarding, we need to vote on this tonight, it's my understanding. And since we haven't heard back from counsel, would it make sense to you, town manager, that we vote subject to possible recommended?
Yeah, I would add to the motion that in any changes a counsel may have to the to the letter, because he'll only strengthen it.
Yep, understood.
Okay, and my only other ask, Mr. Montori, or thought process is the abutters and the residents have been really involved here in a very good way. Like I said, it's our right as a community to do everything we're doing here to make sure to mitigate risk and exposure for the town. So I would like to maybe think of a way, because we're going to have meetings on top of meetings and at the negotiations, to give the residents kind of a status update. So I'll put that on your plate to consider. How do we put it on the future agenda items so that, you know, everything, I hate the word transparent, I like the word honesty better, but we're honest. This is what we've talked about. These are the actions we're taking or not taking, here's why. And then we'll always give the residents an opportunity to grab the microphone during a residence section, so that they're in a loop. And that was been that's been out of the board's commitment throughout here, so.
On that note, and that's a good point, Mr. Chairman. One of the things we discussed on meeting at our meeting on Friday, and again, I think it was a good meeting, at least the assistant town manager and I felt it was productive. I've offered to meet with the abutters, you know, weekly. Like I used Friday as an example in the morning. But, you know, we could pick a date and time that a day and time that works for them. I'll be glad to do that weekly, give them a status update of how things are going, what I know, what's new, what's what we can provide for an update. And I'll continue that through the process if they would like. It just makes it easier to do that than waiting every two weeks at a board meeting. As you can see from, you know, the last couple of weeks, the meetings do become long, and sometimes it's. And sometimes it's better to have the meetings we had as we did this past Friday. So that offer is still out there. Mr. O'Brien, who has been the lead abudder and contact for us, that offer is there. And if they want to continue to do that, we'll do that.
Okay. And, Mr. Montori, Mr. Sadwick, any idea when this would potentially hit the ZBA? Because again, we're going to have all negotiations that'll hit the ZBA. And then, just for the residents and public, it's still open meetings where we're going to discuss the same things if we didn't potentially like what we received or didn't receive. But any idea when this would hit the ZBA? Or not so much now since this is the first phase of submitting the, our?
December, January at the earliest would be my guess.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just one comment because I think this goes to expectation management. When there's negotiations, some of that has to remain behind closed doors. And I know the town manager mentioned executive session.
Good call out.
So I know that the town manager and assistant town manager will make every effort to keep interested parties apprised, but they're not at the table. We're not necessarily at the table either, I might add, even though we have more standing than them to represent the town to some degree. So it just, we all have to keep an even keel around that topic, right? And we're going to have to rely on the judgment of our special counsel and our town administration to make the determination of what can be put out for public consumption at a given point and what has to remain in the guise of negotiation. And that's for the better interest of our community. If we put out our strategy, we put out what we're asking for, then we're watering down our negotiation posture, right? Some of that has to be managed in that way. So I just want to add that for the sake of expectation management.
Okay, fair enough. And this is my first time, I think, my first go around with something like this. So we'll find out what we can and can't do and how we include the residents or not. So good, but good call out. Okay, fair enough. All right, any other questions, comments from the board?
I do have one question.
Please, Ms. Stronach.
Sorry. Would we CC this letter to the zoning board of appeals or no?
We could do that. That's not a problem.
Yeah, we do. We have the chair listed as a CC on this. From a, again, we want this, the ZBA has to have a fair and open hearing. But on the other hand, this is also a public record. So I don't see why it can't go to them.
Yep. I just wasn't sure how that actually worked when we were talking about staying in lanes and just because of the other comments. So we could just get our legal team to say, is that appropriate or not? I know that they can get it through other mechanisms, but I want to just make sure that we're doing things. I don't want to make a...
Taint the process.
Exactly.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I wonder, Mr. Chairman, if it's useful to also send it to the planning board and the finance committee?
After it's complete or prior to?
No, when it's complete.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we can submit it to, we can circulate it to the groups.
Yep.
It's going to be a public record.
And we'll make sure it's online.
As a courtesy.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing now what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to offer a motion to approve the draft letter for a finalization to include the edits offered by Ms. Wellman and also subject to the concurrence of special town council.
Second.
A motion of second. All those in favor, they're signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Five oh unanimous. Thank you. All right, next order of business. This one always, this one always gets me. It's the Halloween trick-or-treat hours for Halloween. But again, just for the residents, we're not dictating. Well, let's pause for a second.
Mr. Chairman, the Red Sox are winning two to one in the first.
I need to get back to my lucky couch.
Sure, the public comments, we've...
Not receiving input from the residents tonight?
Not tonight, not tonight.
No, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the residents did have an opportunity to speak earlier on the agenda.
Okay. All right, the next order of business, okay, is Halloween trick-or-treat hours? Let's reset for two minutes, two-minute recess. Okay, welcome back. Okay, the next order of business is trick-or-treat Halloween hours, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then every year, I get the question. We're always setting these hours just for safety. So we always set the hours for Halloween. That way, everyone knows when the little ones might ring their doorbell. So again, so that's why we declare the hours. So any questions, comments from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set the hours for Halloween trick-or-treating from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 31st.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, next order of business is committee considerations. Tewksbury North and Trehan School Reuse Committee. All right, so I put this one on the agenda per my committee. So again, it's never my committee are representing the board on the committee. So this came about, we're starting to socialize with the different boards, committees, and ultimately with department heads. We've only done one this far. We did the Open Space and Recreation Committee. And when we did that, it was amazing how much they offered the input to this, to our committee, where they know a lot of the ground rules and potentially grants. So they provided us with a ton of information that we just weren't privy to because it kind of really bought us along some of the stuff they do, I guess, when it comes to open space or land. So the vote, the motion of the board was, can we extend the committee to bring in a representation, a voting representation, to help us, essentially a member from the Open Space Recreation Committee to join this committee? So we do have seven members. It would make for an odd number, but we discussed it. We're in no way, shape, or form, even like, you know, nervous that we're going to have an even number when it comes to votes. But we really thought that it would really help the committee, you know, to have that representation since we're going to work very closely with them. So again, it's from the board to bring it to this board to see if we would consider making a motion to add another member. Ms. Stronach, please.
Could you please tell me that the current makeup of the committee, does it have other representations from other committees? Say, the planning board?
Yep, we have one planning board, one select board, and we also have the school committee.
Would there be any other boards as you continue to go out and do? That's my concern, is that as you go out and meet with other groups, that you would find them to have a purpose at the meeting as well? And I would, I mean, obviously, they can participate and be active members, but I am concerned about that because this is your first group that you've met with. Are there other boards that you would think that would have?
We thought about it. We thought about the local housing partnership. I know we'll talk about that tonight in lieu of, you know, sometimes they look for land to do, you know, things with the affordable house. But we're not sure. But again, it was so impactful. I'll give you an example. There's two parks on those parcels, on the Trehan and Ostry. You know, and you kind of don't think, those are CPA funds we use for those. So we need to keep those in some way, shape, or form.
So would CPA be considered to be a member?
No, no, we don't know. We didn't consider that. But case in point was, you know, our committee wasn't really privy to those rules because it kind of applied to open space and when we use the CPA funds. Again, that's one small example. And they also look, they mentioned a lot of work around grants. You know, we talk about the potential. And I'm just saying, potential of demolishing both of those facilities. And that's a huge, we have estimates now, and it's only estimates, of 1.5 million for each of those sites. And again, that godly knows with the specialists or other things in Corona costs, that could go up. And they mentioned examples of potential grants out there of using grants to create open space as an example, which they've done in the past. So again, it was a flurry of these ideas that said, wait a minute, wow, this should be real value. I had to have a member. So to answer your question directly, Ms. Stronach, we're not considering any right now. But again, that was the first committee that really kind of opened our eyes and really helped us in a big way. So I, you know.
I appreciate that. I also appreciate the reminder of the makeup of the current committee.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would support that expansion. I think it's good that you met with Open Space early on. They are a lot of subject matter experts that are on that committee. It's an excellent committee of very informed folks. And I think that their inherent knowledge and access and connectivity to different issues that you're going to be running into will be very useful as you go forward. So I think I would support something like that. I think, I know the other boards in town that you'll be working with. Most of them are collaborative boards and already have a planning board member on them, for instance, and you have that or the select board member. So I think you're kind of hitting all the marks. And I think Open Space Recreation probably should have been considered from the beginning, and it was just an oversight. So I think it's a really good move to have them weighing in on that now. So the process would be, if we were to expand that committee, then Open Space and Recreation would need to have...
They would nominate.
They would nominate. And then we would have to appoint that person. So that's another conversation to be had. Okay.
And I can say they're going to come in. We're going to schedule for the reuse committee to come in front of the board, our next meeting, November 9th. So it will be the second committee that they come in. And again, just to get your gears going and say, hey, we have these parcels. If you kind of put aside dollars and potential zoning violations or whatever, just to get your gears going, what would you potentially consider? And there's no right or wrong answer, but that's the way we're proceeding. And ultimately, we're going to bring it to the residents to get their feedback. But anyways, that's the next order of business. So any other questions, Mr. Johnson or Mr. Mack?
No questions.
My only comment, Mr. Chairman, would be considering adding a ninth member just in case something does come up where you do have to take a vote and be deadlocked, just rounding that number out.
Okay, we did discuss that, but, you know, I, good call out. So I don't know if you want to make an amendment where we would add, I don't know if we want to make an amendment to that or consider that. You know, I'll just take feedback from the board. We did discuss that, but we didn't think that was going to be an issue. But I, but we do stagger, I think, almost every committee to that, let's call it that odd number for that very reason, Mr. Mack. So good, good call out.
I would make a motion to expand the North and Trehan School Reuse Committee by one to include a member of the Open Space and Recreation Committee.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, motion carries five oh. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for the consideration. All right, next order of business is 2020 Select Board meeting dates. And typically for the residents, every year, we work with our administration, our select board administration, to put the dates together. And just at a very high level, I saw two particular dates where they coincide. I think we always catch it with school vacation. Flag February 22 and December 27, '22. So we can always work with those. But did anyone else, was there any other glaring dates that landed on a holiday as such? I did some homework.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if we, my colleagues would permit me, I know there were a couple of drafts of dates circulating around, and I appreciate your catching those because I always look at the school vacation week.
I got that from you, Mr. Johnson.
As a spouse of a teacher, those dates are sacred, so we can't have meetings those weeks. But I haven't had a chance to go through all of them. So I'd like to ask, with permission of the board, that we just table this till the 9th and we can act then.
Beautiful. That will give us a chance to revise it as well, you know, for those. So maybe postpone it and circle those two dates. Is that a fear? Is that?
Yeah, I appreciate your catching those dates, but there may be some others. I just want to go through it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
For consideration, I would like to offer food for thought since we are reconsidering that this board meet once every three weeks rather than twice a month, which sometimes results in three meetings a month. We did this at the elementary building committee meeting level. The meetings became much more focused. And I just offer that up as food for thought that the calendar be looked at as a three-week schedule. It will also capture the summer months because oftentimes we have to add a meeting in that July and August timeframe because the meeting once a month doesn't capture the needs of the committee. So I just offer that as a suggestion for all of us to consider.
So how would that, just so I'm on the same page, how would that potentially influence the schedule for the 2020 meeting dates?
It would, it would throw it out.
You have to redo it.
Okay, let me rephrase the question. How many times potentially would it only be? Would that set us to twice a month or sometimes three?
It would vary. It would basically be once a month. And there may be on those five-week months, I think, twice. You may have like one meeting where there's two months, maybe once or twice a year, from my recollection of what we did in elementary because of the five-week schedule. Every couple of months, there's five weeks in a month. So, but it basically would make us go to once a month. But I have to put that to a calendar, but I just, since we're reconsidering, I'd throw it out.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you did do that, you may even want to consider starting a little earlier only because your meetings may go longer.
And remember too, we always have the ability to strike a meeting. I think we've only done it at limited time. Well, listen, we don't have a full agenda. Let's take what we have on that particular agenda and move it. We haven't done it often, but, so listen, I'm easy with this one. We have a little bit of runway, so I'll go with the pleasure of the board because we can always maybe revise it, take another peek at it, and say, you know something, that looks good or doesn't look good. So I'm good, I'm good either way.
Mr. Montori, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Montori, is that something that you could put together for us? For us to look at?
Yeah, we can look at it. And I'll send the board what it would look like on a calendar.
I'd just be curious.
All right, so I look for a motion to table.
So moved.
Have a motion on a second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are unanimous. Next order of business, Mr. Montori, next order of business is town manager. So the floor is yours.
I think we have an agenda item.
Yeah, and I can handle it in the my report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did, I just want to ask the board to accept a donation that we received in the amount, and to put it in a gift account. The donation is in the amount of $7,000. It's from the family of Stephen J. Dame. It's from the Stephen J. Dame, the Second Scholarship Fund. The money would be put in the gift account for the purpose of purchasing a piece of equipment for our skateboard park and dedicating the equipment in Stephen's name. The facilities and grounds, our director of facilities and grounds met with the family to go over improvements we planned to make at the skate park. And Stephen's mother met with myself... And Stephen's mother met with myself and the director at different times, asking about the possibility of making this donation and wanted us to ensure that the money would be used at the skate park for a piece of equipment. We sent a letter back, obviously thanking them, committing, committing to that. And what I'd asked the board tonight to do is to accept the donation of $7,000 from the Stephen J. Dame II Scholarship Fund, placing in a gift account specifically for a piece of equipment at the town's skateboard park at Livingston Park.
Wow, wow, that's, that's, that's awesome, wow.
It is.
Okay, no, that's very good. Comments from the board?
I'd just like to make a motion to accept the very generous donation from the Dame family and ask that the town manager send a note of gratitude on our behalf.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Well, beautiful motion. That's very, very nice. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
And Mr. Chairman, I just have two other items under my report, one other item under my report, they're special, they're town council bills. The first is from September 1st through September 15th. I'm recommending payment in the amount of $3,017.50.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five oh.
And then a second bill from September 16th through September 30th in the amount of $4,505. I'd recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Anything else, Mr. Montori?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do not have any meetings. Bring us the board member reports. How about Ms. Wallman?
Really, really briefly. The Tewksbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee met for the first time. We've set our meeting dates as the first Thursday of every month. It's a great committee, and we are getting started on how we want to organize and do outreach and so forth. So more to come on that. But we will be approving our minutes at our next meeting. We'll circulate those. And the second thing I wanted to add is that NIMCOG is tomorrow, and there's nothing really new to report there. And I'd like to give a shout out to our dispatchers in our, in our dispatch center for Tewksbury and Drakett. They are doing an excellent job, and I just want to reiterate that from this community to those employees. Thank you.
Thank you. How about Ms. Stronach?
Okay, so I will try to be brief, but I have a lot to cover tonight, so my apologies ahead of time for you Red Sox fans. So a couple things. First of all, I'd like to talk about the Elementary Building Committee. The Elementary Building Committee is going to meet Thursday, October 21st, this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. One of the things that has come to my attention is the naming of the new school. It is, I thought that the naming of the new school went to the school committee and then came back to the Elementary Building Committee. It has been brought to my attention that my thought process was incorrect, and there is actually a policy in the school committee that gives them the authority to name the building. I just want to let people know what that process was. There were many names, some of them from the Elementary Buildings Committee members that were provided to the school committee, as well as some members from the public. Just so that people are aware, what they had to consider was the Center School, the Center Elementary School, AIM School, and Sullivan, the Foster School, the Helen Keller School, the Miko Kaufman School, the North Trehan Elementary, the Ryan Elementary, the Tewksbury Upper Elementary, Wamisette Elementary, Pleasant Elementary, and Shawshin School. On October 13th, the school committee met. They had two motions regarding the name. The first motion was to name the school the Shawshin School. That resulted in a tie vote with one member abstaining, which led to a second motion to name the school the Center School. That passed with four and another abstention. So the name of the new elementary school is going to be the Center School. So that puts that issue to bed, and I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that. The next thing is also on Thursday night at 7:00 p.m., the Events Committee will be meeting. On our agenda is the tree lighting. For all those elves out there, it will be on December 3rd. I see excitement, which I am excited about that event as well. I hope it is as beautiful as it was last year in terms of the weather. The last thing I'd like to talk about is the Local Housing Partnership. Many of you have already received a letter from several of the board members resigning from their positions from that committee. And there has been some frustration on that committee. As you know, over the last few meetings, probably over the last six months, I have talked to you about things that are happening on that committee in terms of reorganizing the mission statement, trying to get some additional help to help prioritize affordable housing. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to kind of review my involvement on that and kind of where we're at and make, hopefully, some suggestions for this board to consider. So in 2016, when I rejoined the committee, at that time, the Local Housing Partnership did not have a select board member. The committee was somewhat dormant, mostly because of lack of a quorum on the committee. It was a very large committee, and they were unable to get enough people to attend those meetings. So at that time, I worked with my colleagues to regroup the committee. And the, one of the things that we did at that time was we decreased some of the numbers. We also made the select board, which I'm working on getting that into my vocabulary, representative to be an ex officio member with the ability to vote in case there wasn't a quorum. That was a big deal to do that and kind of re-energize that committee. At that time, we spent the next, probably about a year and a half with NIMCOG producing the Tewksbury Affordable Housing Production Plan. And we, at that time, were, then after we did that, we were starting to identify potential lots, vacant lots for the affordable housing, to see if we could present those for a town meeting to, for purchases, et cetera, et cetera. We worked with Tewksbury Habitat, the Mass Housing, veteran agencies, as well as other potential builders to bring projects forward to the community. We submitted some requests for the use of the Affordable Trust Funds, most notably the recent veterans for Soldier On, which you all approved. And again, over the last year or so, the committee has not felt that they were as effective as we actually should have been. And again, we reworked our mission statement. We brought forward recommendations and then worked with NIMCOG to see if we could look for some consultants to kind of widen the work that we were doing on that committee. We put out a posting, which this board approved for, the, to use of their funds from the Affordable Trust Fund, which is a large amount of money, as you all know. And this board approved that consultant. We went out and worked on an RFP, and unfortunately, as I told you, I think it was the last meeting or the meeting before, nobody responded to that RFP. At which time, I spoke to the chairman and said, we should really be rethinking the approach to this committee. The structure, in my opinion, wasn't as effective as it should have been. And there was, we were definitely not working to our potential. So under the current structure of this committee, and I think we need a new approach for this committee. I expressed that to the chair, and they did have a meeting. And several resignations resulted in that. Again, some frustration with lack of support. I will say, I understand the frustration because I don't believe that they felt that we were as effective as we could have been. But I think it really has to do with the structure and the approach that needs to be taken. So at this point, I am not requesting that we dissolve the committee or do anything. What I really would like, Mr. Chairman, and we can put this on for a future agenda, item if need be, but I would like the town manager and the assistant town manager to work with the planning and development department. Thank you. And along with our housing authority, to come up with something for us to reconsider. And I would like it to be a different approach than what we've taken in the past. This committee has been a longstanding committee, and I think that given the current structure, the use of how we should be looking at the Affordable Trust Fund, and especially given the work that we just talked about with the project of 40B, I just would like a new look at this, and I am asking that the town manager do that. I do want to just state that the letter that was provided tonight had a large section of that where it talked about housing. The majority of that work was done by the partnership. So I want to thank the Housing Partnership, the Local Housing Partnership, because I think that they have done tremendous work over the years. But I think that of late, we haven't been as effective as maybe members would have liked to, and I think that we need a new approach. So that is my updates. I ask that as a consideration for an upcoming agenda item. And I would like to task the town manager with that if you so feel the need.
That's fine, yeah, we can, we can absolutely do that. The administration will put something together and we'll bring it to the board's consideration in a couple of meetings.
And I would like from this board, a letter of gratitudes to be sent to those members for their service to the town, because I think that they have done a tremendous service to this town and appreciate their work.
We'll, we'll put a letter together and leave it in the board's mailbox to sign, and we'll send out.
Thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. How about Mr. Johnson?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I'll just offer one item, and then I'm going to just piggyback on something that Mrs. Stronach was just speaking to. First, the Zoning Bylaw Subcommittee is meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. And we have crafted a proposed work plan for the balance of the year and into, I believe it's early February, with the goal of once again, meeting the warrant deadline next February, so we can present a revised zoning bylaw change to the community at the annual town meeting. So the committee has to weigh in on that schedule, and obviously, we have to undertake the work that's entailed with it, but that's what we're going to attempt to do. So tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m. here in Town Hall, for those interested. And I just, I want to piggyback on what you just said, Mrs. Stronach, about the Local Housing Partnership. I have enormous respect for any individual who volunteers his or her time to our community in any capacity. Our town government, local government in general, does not function properly unless we have interested and engaged residents. We here choose to put our name on a ballot. Many people don't choose to do that, but they raise their hand to serve our town in other ways. So to your point, historically, I want to echo your comments and appreciation for those many people who have served on the Housing Partnership. It's an invaluable service. But I do want to take umbrage with the correspondence that we received because the inference or direct statement was that those people who resigned felt as though that they were not supported by the town. I assume that means management in this body. And you gave the best case as to why I couldn't disagree more. Everything that you said about what was done was supported by this board, whether it was restructuring, adding a selectman, approving soldiers on, authorizing $30,000 for a consultant. This body supported every single request. And I just have a hard time accepting that if you want to resign, you should be able to do that because it's a volunteer position. But you should not lay the blame at a body or a management group that throughout the entire experience has been as supportive as everything that they've asked for. So I'm supportive of your request to send a letter of gratitude, but I want to add to the record that the tone and accusation, I think, was somewhat demeaning and insulting, and those parties should consider that information. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Mack?
Mr. Chairman, short and sweet as always. Over the past few months, I've been working with Mr. Montori and his staff. And on Monday, October 25th, next Monday, Tewksbury will be hosting a municipal cybersecurity summit for our town and surrounding towns. Lots of work went into that. We've got a number of towns. It's going to be really interesting to start tackling that problem of not only what we have, but other municipalities in the state, actually, every municipality in the state. And in closing, go Red Sox.
Go Red Sox. All right, on a sad note, I just want to extend, we, Tewksbury lost a beautiful man this past week or whatever it was, Mr. Mark Donovan. So just want to say condolences to his wife and to his two kids, to his family, to his extended family, and to the community. That was very, very hard hit, lovely man, and he, he will be missed. So with that being said, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.